All right, good evening, everybody. This is the regularly scheduled meeting of the South Haven City Council. It is Monday, November the 20th, 2023. Let's call this meeting to order. Invocation this evening, we have Cantor Lou Price from the First Hiram Congregation here this evening. Good evening. Thank you for being out.
I think the last time I was here, I was looking pretty scruffy because I was getting ready to play Santa.
That's fun.
Because, you know, what else does a good Jewish boy have to do on Christmas?
Love it. Love it.
And it got canceled due to a big snowstorm. So this year, I'm a little, little more prepared, so we'll...
Well, thank you for being here.
We'll see here. But I appreciate you inviting us back. I guess I did well enough last time that, that I was asked to come back. I also want to, since I've got the platform, I want to thank the City Council in South Haven and the Police Department and, and Police Chief Thompson because of extra security that we've been provided, especially since October 7th. So truly appreciate it. Thank you so much. As we gather under the open sky of ideas, let us invoke the spirit of clarity. May our minds be free from the clutter of distractions, enabling us to see our objectives with the unwavering focus of a stargazer. Through discussions, bathed in lucidity, let us chart a course that is guided by our collective vision. Let this invocation of clarity illuminate the path to thoughtful decisions and purposeful actions, binding us in a common purpose that transcends our differences. In this convergence of minds, let empathy be our guiding star. As we share our stories and perspectives, may we take a moment to step into each other's shoes, to feel the pulse of their experiences. With each empathic connection, we fortify the bridges that unite us, ensuring that our deliberations are enriched by a tapestry of diverse insights. Through this invocation of empathy, let us weave threads of understanding and compassion, fostering an environment where every voice is valued. Amid the ebb and flow of ideas, let the spirit of collaboration flow freely. Imagine our thoughts as tributaries coming together to form a mighty river of invocation. Just as each drop contributes to the river's strength, so do our unique skills and perspectives meld into a force that propels us towards shared success. Through this invocation of collaboration, let us embrace the beauty of harmonious teamwork where the sympathy of joint efforts creates melodies that resonate beyond these walls. In this realm of dialogue, let open-mindedness be our guiding beacon. Let us unshackle ourselves from the constraints of preconceived notions and biases, allowing our minds to be the fertile ground where new ideas can take root. Like explorers of old, let us venture into the uncharted territories of thought, unafraid of embracing perspectives that challenge the status quo. Through this invocation of open-mindedness, let us cultivate a garden of innovation where novel ideas flourish and creativity knows no bounds. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And again, thanks for coming out tonight. Have fun with your grandkid. And now if you're able, join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
Jeff Arnold.
Here.
Wendy Onuki.
Here.
Joe Reiser.
Here.
Steve Schlock.
George Sleeper.
Here.
Letitia Wilkins.
Scott Smith.
Here.
Make a motion to excuse Steve Schlock.
Second.
All right, I want to do Letitia as well.
I'll make a motion to excuse Letitia Wilkins, just in case.
Just in case.
Second then also.
All right, so motion second to excuse Council members Schlock and Wilkins. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those who say no, they are excused. All right. We now have two proclamations of two outstanding individuals who I think many of this community know, and if you do not know, I hope after tonight, you take a moment to get to know both of them. We're going to start with Mr. Bob Coppen, who, if he's willing to come up, if you guys want to come up to the podium, at least we can get you on the camera and let the public see you guys instead of us. You're the, you can save that 22-page speech for after I get done chatting here, so...
I just cut one page out. It's down to 21.
Okay, good. All right. Well, this is Bob Coppen. If you don't know Bob Coppen, again, fantastic man. If you look around this town, his fingerprints are on a lot of different things, so this proclamation is for you. Whereas Robert, or as we all know, Bob Coppen moved to Hartford, Michigan during his childhood and graduated from Papa High School, and whereas Mr. Coppen attended Western Michigan University to study accounting, and then Michigan State University to study business administration, and whereas Mr. Coppen enlisted in the Army and was assigned to Germany as a security officer, he was later promoted to transportation officer and responsible for the movement of supplies throughout Europe. And whereas Mr. Coppen had a distinguished professional life in financial management, he worked for several companies that allowed him to serve abroad. His career culminated as chief financial officer for Amana Appliances in Cedar Rapids, Iowa. And Mr. Coppen retired in 1993, moved to South Haven, Michigan, and served in the International Service Corps.
Whereas Bob, sharing 65 years of marriage with his wife Jane before her passing in 2021, Jane was a dedicated teacher and travel companion. They raised three children, Chris, Mark, and Robin. And whereas Mr. Coppen is the founding president of Shout, a local community organization that is instrumental in community improvement projects, including the Four Seasons gathering place in Dyckman Park, Shout Park, numerous sculptures and art installations, the historic tugboat Wilhelm Braun at the Maritime Museum, the Dyckman Bridge Flowers, holiday lights, the annual cottage walk, and much, much more. And whereas he did not stop there, Bob often says, "The first part of our lives is dedicated to our careers and our family, and the second part to our, to serving others." He established the South Haven Speaker Series, the South Haven Performance Series, and the South Haven Theater Series. These are vibrant, thriving organizations that continue to enrich the culture and community, community life of South Haven. Whereas Bob Coppen was selected, selected and the South Haven Rotary Club's 2023 Rotarian of the Year, an organization he's been a member of since 1994. According to the Rotary Club President Melinda Gruber, "Bob is a consistent source of humor and good cheer, and an inspiration for those who want to make great things happen in a small community like South Haven. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City of South Haven wishes to recognize Robert Bob Coppen and express appreciation for his ongoing service to the community. Your inspiring leadership, positive vision, and contributions to the community have helped to make this, make it a better place to live, work, and play. Signed, Mayor Scott Smith, City of South Haven, presented 20th November, 2023."
Thank you very much. As Cantor Price said, "Collaboration is the word," and that's what we've had wonderfully in South Haven with the city, with its residents. I want to thank you most sincerely for the honor, for the recognition you're giving to Shout and to me here today. Thirty years ago, my late wife Jane and I moved into our conduit Marina Townhomes temporarily until we decided where we wanted to live in retirement. How could we leave such an amazing community? We decided to stay to work with our community, travel into our sailboat, which we kept at the condo's riverside dock. Kipling wrote, "God gave, God gave all men the world to love, but each, while each man's heart is small, ordained that each should have one place beloved overall." The Second Mountain. Some of you have probably read New York Times columnist David Brooks. In his book, The Second Mountain, we had just climbed the first mountain, which includes developing a resume, working, raising a family, and now face the second mountain, retirement and service. I was encouraged by a centenarian's reply when he asked, "What's best about growing older?" In his case, he was 100, he replied, "No peer pressure." With this valuable encouragement, I started a new nonprofit citizens organization, Shout for South Haven, dedicated to working to making a great community even better. Some Shout projects, the Drawbridge Flowers, a lot of them have been mentioned, the Cottage Walks, the Thursday night concerts on the waterfront, which were turned over to the city, the performance series starting that, starting the speakers series, starting the theater series, and the current fireplace project, which we hope to be able to warm our hands by shortly, but it may be a little later. Three sculptures, putting antique-style benches and lamps on the beach, replacing the wooden light poles, donating a historic William Baum, Wilhelm Baum to the Michigan Maritime Museum, to antique-style street clocks, many other things. Also, I've been on the boards of the Michigan Maritime Museum, South Haven Yacht Club, South Haven Community Foundation, South Haven Industrial Fund, Chamber of Commerce. I also volunteered with the International Executive Service Corps and worked in Slovakia with a company. My wife Jane once rilely observed, "When you volunteer, I seem to do a lot of work." Among the other things, she happily ran the Drawbridge Flowers 18 years, often carrying milk jugs full of water. I don't know why, but my wife claims some people hesitate to answer the phone when I call. Seriously, many wonderful people have made Shout, and what it does possible, Ron and Donna Goodrich, Bob Stickland, the Cunningham's, the Avros, the Hicksons, the Renner's, the Odlands, a flock of Rotarians, and many others, including superb cooperation from Scott, Griffin, and Kate at the City of South Haven. Thank you for the recognition today for my efforts and the efforts of many others in working to make a great community even better.
You can't go that fast.
The mayor's going to come forward. You know, there's a similarity with you and our next president. You're both jokesters.
Come right up in here, Scott, will you?
I know.
I would like, yeah, I have you back. There you go. And Bob will be right next to you. There you go. That's great. Okay. Right here. Do you want to move a little to your right? To your right. There you go. That's great. Right here. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
And I will just say with the fireplace project, it's a lot of fun, because when Bob shows up and just, his question is, "How do we do this?" No, it's not, "Can we?" It's, "How do we do this?" So it got done, and I give him all the credit in the world for making it happen. All right, now we get to do another one. How fun is this? So Jim and Cherie, I can borrow Mr. Jim McLuhan up here. Thank you for, where were you yesterday at this time?
Los Angeles, California.
Los Angeles.
Yes.
He fended off my phone calls and said, "Oh, you're going to come back for this, right?" So he was coming back anyway.
Before then, I was in Dallas, and before then, I was in New Orleans, within 10 days.
Remarkable. And again, if you, if you don't know Jim, I hope you look him up sometime, and I'll tell us, I know you've heard me say this before, but, you know, as busy as his life is, and, you know, him, Cherie, wonderful people, and, you know, my kids were little, and I don't even think it, you're, there's, this writing's really small. There's a lot of stuff on here. We didn't even get it, Coach of the Year, or this, that. I mean, there's a lot of stuff we didn't even make on here, but just a fantastic coach. I twisted his arm one time when my boys were doing junior baseball and even high school. He shows up, practice on the weekend, just a little private work, then showed up to the games, and that's just who you are, in addition to everything else you do.
That's why they made the New York Yankees lineup.
That's exactly right. Exactly right. So anyway, again, so well-deserved. I will, so I'll, I'll work through this, and just want to say again, thank you for you, for everything you do, you have done, your service, we thank you. So I will begin. I'll have some help. A proclamation for Mr. Jim McLuhan. Whereas James C. McLuhan was born in South Haven, Michigan on April the 30th, 1946. He spent his childhood in Bangor, Michigan, where his parents moved to take over the family farm. And whereas Mr. McLuhan was a four-sport varsity athlete at Bangor High School and went on to wrestle, play football and baseball at Olivet College, he earned a Bachelor of Arts degree in sociology and a teaching certificate in 1968. And whereas Mr. McLuhan accepted a teaching and coaching position at South Haven Public Schools. He was drafted into the Army three months later at the age of 22. And whereas Mr. McLuhan reported to basic training in September 1968 at Fort Knox, Kentucky. He was assigned to Fort Sam Houston, Texas, two months after arriving at basic training to complete advanced training as a medical specialist. And whereas Mr. McLuhan received deployment orders to Vietnam, his tour was from March 1969 to March 1970. And...
Whereas Mr. McLuhan's Army awards and decorations include the Bronze Star Medal with a V device and oak leaf cluster, the Purple Heart with bronze oak leaf cluster, the Good Conduct Medal, the Vietnam Service Medal with three bronze service stars, the Army Valorous Unit Citation, National Defense Service Medal, the Republic of Vietnam Campaign Medal with 60 device, the Republic of Vietnam Cross of Gallantry with palms and one oak leaf cluster, the Combat Medical Badge, and the M16 Expert Rifle Badge. And whereas Mr. McLuhan returned to his teaching and coaching profession in South Haven following his honorable service in Vietnam, he earned a Master of Arts degree in counseling and psychology from Western Michigan University in 1972. And whereas Mr. McLuhan taught sociology and psychology at South Haven High School until his retirement in 2008, earning him the Michigan Education Association's 40 Years of Service Award. He was also the recipient of the Wolverine Conference Distinguished Service Award for 38 years of coaching football and baseball, in addition to 22 years of coaching wrestling. He was inducted into the Michigan High School Baseball Coaches Association Hall of Fame in 1993, the Michigan High School Coaches Hall of Fame in 2003, and the Michigan High School Football Coaches Association Hall of Fame in 2008. Mr. McLuhan was also a Michigan High School Athletic Association Wrestling official for 25 years. And whereas Specialist Five, James C. McLuhan, was approved for the Medal of Honor by President Barack Obama and Secretary of the Army Eric Fanning in December 2016 for his actions during the Vietnam War. He was presented the Medal of Honor on July 31st, 2017 by President Donald Trump. Whereas Mr. McLuhan continues to live in South Haven with his wife Cherie. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City of South Haven wishes to recognize James C. McLuhan and express appreciation for his service to the country and to the community. Notably, the annual Memorial Day Parade and memorial ceremony at Lakeview Cemetery would not be the same without you. Your contributions to the community have helped to make it a better place to live, work, and play. Signed, Mayor Scott Smith, this day of November, 2023.
Well, South Haven has blessed the McLuhan family more than you could imagine. My grandfather, who was a World War I veteran, came here in the early 1900s, raised his family. My father actually graduated from South Haven High School Central over here in 1941. My dad served in World War II. My Uncle Wayne quit school and went to war in Korea. My Uncle Jack, who actually worked here at City Hall, he was an excellent athlete, and he was with the United States Coast Guard. And so when I was drafted, I didn't volunteer. I had the contract to teach here. It didn't take me long to realize that, that, that was what I needed to do, I guess. I needed to follow my family and to serve my country. I'll make this a little shorter because I can tell a story, and I'm sorry you have to hear it again, because I do appreciate that you were there. And no one needs to apologize for not being there, because everybody has busy lives, and of course, a holiday is one of those times when something that pops in like this, you cannot honor that. The second day of the battle, I heard, "Medic!" I rushed into the kill zone with the enemy firing in one direction and my men firing in the other direction, and I came upon a wounded soldier, shot in the stomach. Organs had begun to seep out, so I got them in and got the pressure bandages on. I had nothing to eat or drink in those 48 hours that we fought this battle, 89 of us against 2,700 enemy soldiers. So I took my water, this is why I didn't drink it, and I put it on the bandages, because if I didn't put it on the bandages, his organs would dry up and he would die anyway. I got him fixed up. I was a sitting duck. I got hit with an AK-47 during the process, dragged him into a trench line that the French had left there in the French-Vietnamese War. And I'm trying to figure out, how am I going to carry this man, who was much larger than me, out through the crossfire without things going undone? Generally, I would throw a man over my shoulder, firemen carry sort, but this was different. I finally decided what I could do is hold him like a baby, put the pressure bandages against my chest, and get as low as I could, and this was one time when it was really good that I was short, get as low as I could, and race through the crossfire. All of a sudden, out of nowhere, a thought came over me. It had been since I was a little boy that I told my father that I love him. Because those of you that are old enough will know that in the 50s and 60s, you didn't do that. Fathers didn't say, "I love you" to boys, and boys didn't say, "I love you" to their brothers or their dad. I had a conversation with God, and I said, "Lord, if you get me out of this hell on earth, so I can tell my father that I love him one more time, I'll be the best coach, I'll be the best teacher, and I'll be the best dad that I can possibly be." An incredible peace came over me. I don't believe that we're puppets on a string and God can save Jim McLuhan and let another person die, but the spirit did come over me, and it did help me through the final months. I ran to my father in the O'Hare Airport, threw my arms around him, used those three words, "I love you." He did the same thing back at me, as if we'd been doing that for 24 years of my life so far. It was our greeting, our departure. I taught my children, my grandchildren, my athletes. I had 72 assistant coaches through the years. I told them that it was macho to say those three words. And I'm giving you an assignment. You didn't think you're getting out of here without an assignment from an old teacher. There must be somebody that you failed to say those three words too lately. You've just been kind of busy, or you haven't seen them, so it didn't come across your mind. If it's not too late tonight, do it tonight. If not, do it tomorrow. Call them. Not only will you tell them that you love them, but you will tell them why. And now you know why I was so busy. I loved what I did, but I had something to pay back to my Creator. I'm still trying to do it. I thank the City of South Haven, South Haven Public Schools, all the, about 14,000 kids I had in class and 4,400 athletes, and of course, the City of South Haven, and it's, it's wonderful, wonderful place. We brag about it all the time. If you think you got some, I tell the guys that I served with in California, you're not the only one that sees the sun go down in the water, right here in South Haven. God bless you. God bless this community. And on a final note, I gladly stand up next to you and defend her still today, because there ain't no doubt, I love this land. God bless the USA. I do have something, I do have something for you that you might want to put in the men's bathroom.
I like it. Okay.
But it's a picture of Mr. Trump and I, myself. Do whatever you want to with it. Thank you much.
I will.
I wore my boots so I'd be taller than Scott. This guy is my next-door neighbor. I'm like, "How you doing?"
I'm doing well.
Thank you. Thank you all. So thank you all. Let's give them a minute to sneak out. Have a great night. Happy Thanksgiving, everybody. Yay. Okay. Next. We're going to get an update from Van Buren, our Commissioner, Ms. Gail Patterson-Gladie. And good evening, Gail.
Good evening. Twisted ankle, I will see in physical therapy soon.
I got people for that.
It's an honor to be here and stand here after those great residents that we have in our city. I wanted to give you some information from the county. I don't think I have given you all a copy of the Who, What, and Where for Area Agency on Aging. It's a reference guide to the services of older adults and people with disabilities in Bay Area, Cass, and Van Buren County. I won't go through all of this. I would like you all to make sure to go through it so that you can be able to help your residents who have different challenges. Our county for years have had the problem of excess paperwork in the Sheriff's Department and the courts, and we have, for years, I've been wanting to have the digitalization project where we would digitize the paperwork. Finally, this year, we voted to use ARPA dollars for, on behalf of the courts and the sheriffs... on behalf of the courts and the Sheriff's Department. And the cost is going to be $491,925 approximately. So I was very happy to hear about that and to take part in that. A lot of people say, "What does the county do?" We are responsible for overseeing and making sure that the residents have health, safety, and welfare. And we, every year, pass the county budget. A lot of people don't realize that. We also vote on the apportionment report, and it's a statutory duty of the Van Buren County Board of Commissioners. And you can read more about it in the report, I believe they received from the county. I'd like to let you know that Lisa Imus Ransler is the county's new Community Services Coordinator, and hopefully she'll be able to come and introduce herself to you. And Kate already knows her from the Van Buren County Brownfield Authority. A resolution in support of replacing the Nichols-covered bridge was passed with a bridge that is comparable. And so we were able to work with some of your residents and get that before the county so that we could pass that resolution. We have one issue that I like to hear information from the residents on. This holiday season, there is controversy between if we should have a Christmas tree in the courthouse and decorate for Christmas or not. So if you have any opinions, please send that to me. Also, something that's important is if you have a friend of the court DNR license suspension, we have information about that. There's going to be Amnesty Day, Tuesday, December 12. And if you are a parent who has a DNR license suspension for failure to pay child support issued by the 36th Circuit Court, friend of the court, then this would be applied to you. It is to help you to get on the path of paying and staying current on support. It will not change the amount of the support you pay or the past due amount. So I'm going to give this to your city manager to share with you and the public. As many of you know, making sure that our residents know about programs that help with mental health is a passion of mine. And we have three more programs. And these are going to be the last programs from the Stay Well program from the state. One is for teenagers, staying well through the holidays. The other is coping with grief and loss through the holidays. And the last one is Stay Well Creative Coping, an art-based workshop for kids and parents. As many of you have heard of the 988, we have, it's been a year, and there's statistics about how effective it has been. And the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services is celebrating the success over the past year since the launch of the 988 Suicide and Crisis Lifeline in Michigan. We have information and stories about how it's been helpful. And I will also give that information to your city manager. One of the quotes I just wanted to mention is someone said, "A person reached out to 988 and stated that they had spoken to a 988 specialist previously and wanted to thank her. They stated they don't get a lot of support, but the call specialist said everything they needed to hear, and call helped them and their entire family." So there's a 24/7 helpline, and it would be good for everyone to know how to share that information with residents. Oops. See, I got a lot of things here. Okay. I have information about how to help veterans. Some veterans need food support, et cetera. So I'm going to give that to you, too. And Veterans Outreach. Also, I don't know if you know that the county helps with the Veterans Therapy Garden that's in Paw Paw. And there's a lot of other programs for veterans. Some of them are focused on forage, agriculture, business, community, family, food and health, lawn and garden, and natural resources. So I will pass that out also. And I hope you get a chance to look everything over and then share that with the community. One last thing is I wanted to let you know that on November 27, there's going to be Trees for Troops event. That happens every year at Warmhoff Farms, and that is in Gobles, 22330 M40 Highway. The troops, the trees are loaded that day, and the public's welcome to come out to help if you'd like to. And the trees go to our troops, and we have a lot of positive feedback from that. So do you have any questions for me today?
Questions? Any questions? I know one thing, I just, as I see these brochures, we should probably just maybe look at our display calendar out there and maybe just have a spot for county brochures that you could make sure we're just, you know what I mean, like, from the county, just so we could keep that updated. You could, you know, something to think about. We've got room, so.
Okay, that would be great. Because a lot of residents don't know what the county does.
Correct.
Don't know the services that their tax money is supporting.
Correct. Which is nice, you come and share, but the more, the better. So thank you for coming, and happy Thanksgiving.
Same to you. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Take care of that ankle.
Okay.
Next, we have the approval of the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion, second, to approve the agenda. Questions, comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no, it's approved. That takes us to public comment. This will be for items that are on the agenda. So if you'd like to speak to any items that are on tonight's agenda, come on up, state your name and address. You'll have up to five minutes, and we would love to hear what you have to say.
Good evening. How are you?
Good. How are you?
Grace Borgfield at 302 Michigan Avenue. And I'm here to ask Agenda Item Number 15 that's on the agenda tonight is about fire pits, fireplaces, and barbecue grills. And I'm hoping that this has been a very, very, very long road. And so I'm hoping that the Planning Commission has taken a great amount of time and has given you some information. And I know Kelly's here tonight to explain any other additional information. My hope is that you move this forward so people can get on with their projects. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? No?
Mary Hasley, 726 North Shore Drive. Just wanted to reiterate a few things that I've discussed via email. First, Agenda Item 12, the advance for Charah. It would be nice to have confirmation about the match that each of those grants are supposed to have. Confirm that the surplus in the general account is there. The information in the Agenda Packet indicated it was from the April 23 budget review. And how that money is expected to be proportioned between the two projects, and most importantly, guaranteeing repayment. Because this is taxpayer money that shouldn't be funding it. I appreciate the importance of the projects. And it's very unfortunate that the DNR is not reimbursing them quick enough. But I just, being fiscally responsible, I would like that information clarified. For Agenda Item 14, for the STR update, I think it would be very helpful and transparent to provide a list of the permit number and address and the types of actions that were identified, and the warning, the dates of the warning letter and first to third violation when they're appropriate. So we can identify what are some of the significant issues, and if they're in specific areas, that would help us, I think. It would also help go a long way to identify the cost to the city and the taxpayers for enforcing this. You know, I'm sure the code enforcement officer spent a lot of time. I have no doubt that the STR administrator fees already go to the STR program. But two of those cases appear to have gone to court, so that incurred legal fees, I'm guessing, and legal costs. And it would be nice to know if there were fines assessed and how much was borne by the person requiring the cases to go to court, and what is being done to recover those costs so they're not borne by the taxpayers or put onto the STR applications in general and have to be paid by everybody when probably most of everybody is complying. More importantly, over occupancy appears to have had three situations identified. And it would be nice to have specific criteria that was used for that because, from what I'm hearing, that that is a concern of residents. And it would just be nice to know what is done so that we would know when or when not to contact, be more efficient use of everyone's time and for consistency. With regard to legal services, I would like to thank City Manager Hozier for getting back to me on my question. I'm very pleased to hear that. The interviews will be in public. I would appreciate if the interviews were done such that the interviewers were not present during the Q and A of other people. And I would appreciate any guidance on whether a decision would be made immediately after the interviews, or whether a separate meeting would be held and whether that would be open to the public or closed. And last but not least, I reiterate the previous person's comment about the fireplace, fire pit, barbecue. It has, to reemphasize, it has taken a long time, and it also was right on the, right after the ordinance had been passed. So it's something that's, we really need to have closure. It's affected two summers' worth, and I certainly hope this can be resolved quickly. Thank you.
Thank you. Was there anybody else on items on the agenda? Going twice. Sold. Okay. How about consent agenda items A through D?
Make a motion to approve consent agenda items A through D.
Second.
Motion, second. Any questions, comments? Nothing. This is a roll call.
Arnold.
Yes.
Onuki.
Yes.
Reeser.
Yes.
Sleeper.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes. New business. City Council is going to be asked to consider approving the following special event applications. If it pleases the board, I will read them both together. Special Event 2023-48 is Rotary Pancake Breakfast, to be held on July 7, 2024, from 6:30 a.m. until 1 p.m. at the Huron Street Pavilion. And Special Event 2023-49, Worship on the Riverwalk, 2024, to be held every Sunday between July 14 through July 28 at the Riverfront Park from 7 p.m. until 8:15 p.m.
Make a motion to approve Special Event 2023-48, Rotary Pancake Breakfast. Special Event 2023-49, Worship on the Riverwalk, 2024, both as read by the mayor.
Second.
Got a motion, we've got a second. Kate?
We just have two returning events coming back for, back before us for 2024. Rotary Club does their pancake breakfast. They're just looking for additional trash pickup under the pavilion, electrical outlets, and additional 30 cones. Worship on the Riverfront is, you know, starting July 14 and continuing each week through July 28. And they're not needing too many services, just the park and electricity for equipment.
Okay. Our thanks to the Rotary. And I know Pastor Smolligan, who was instrumental in that Worship on the Riverwalk, is not here with us tonight. Keep it in your thoughts and prayers. I know he's battling, you know, some healthcare challenges. We're thinking about him, and he was instrumental in making that happen. And he's worked hard to come before us and kind of calm the public with the concerns about the number of events when that. And it's turned out to be a great event. So just keep him in your thoughts and prayers this holiday season. So we've got a motion, we've got a second. Sorry, were there any other questions of the council? Sorry.
I just, the only thing I wanted to know was the Rotary breakfast. I know when we had the farmer's market, people here, they said how they were being, or where they were being moved during these events was kind of hard for them. So I don't know if, when it gets closer, if we want to try to figure out something that works better for them.
The pancake breakfast is on a Sunday and not on a Saturday.
Never mind.
So this one, I don't think this is the one that caused the rub, but this one is usually the day after.
Awesome. I will take that back.
Good question.
Just want to thank the applicants for getting their applications in very early before the events.
Yes, we do appreciate that.
Very helpful.
Good point. All right, we've got a motion, we've got a second. Again, thanks to the organizers to approve Special Event 2023-48, Rotary Pancake Breakfast, 2023-49, Worship on the Riverwalk. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. They are approved. Next, City Council is going to be asked to consider an advance funding to the South Haven Area Recreation Authority in the amount of $100,000 for the construction of the 14th Avenue Recreation Fields First Phase and the Phoenix Street kayak launch. Just need a motion to...
I make a motion to provide advanced funding for the South Haven Area Recreation Authority in the amount of $100,000 for the construction of the 14th Avenue recreational fields and the first phase of the Phoenix Street kayak launch.
Second. All right, motion, a second. Kate?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. So Charah is, as you know, in the midst of constructing two projects at once. This is pretty unusual for Charah. Usually, they try for several years to get one project to hit, and here, they've had two. So they have a kayak launch that's being built at Phoenix Street. The match has already been provided by the CBB. That's $98,500. And then the project cost is $300,288,300. The grant is going to be, is providing $246,000 and some change. So what happens when you receive a grant award where you're getting 50% or 75% of the grant cover, I'm sorry, the project cost covered by the grant, means that you have to expend those funds and then seek reimbursement from the state granting agencies. And they do try to turn them around within 45 days. However, between these two grants, we're at least 90 days out. And I can tell you that we've just, you know, we have submitted a grant request to be reimbursed for $136,000. I believe that's the amount. And we have not been, you know, been told about that reimbursement. So that's the being asked tonight, is that will the city lend or advance Charah $100,000 to cover the construction cost for these two projects? The South Haven Charter Township has already made their contribution in the form of $100,000. And this is just to tide over Charah while these two projects are going through. Between the grants, the matches, and what has been in the account for Charah, the money is there. It's just having a liquidity problem because the money has gone out, and we're waiting for that reimbursement to come back in and pay the next round of contractor fees. So we're very helpful, very thankful to Comptons, who has been our contractor on both these projects, has been very helpful. But this is the issue that Charah is facing.
Very good. Questions, comments?
The Phoenix Street kayak launch, what I heard, that once completed, there'll be a shuttle that'll run you out there and you can put in and float back. Sounds like a great addition and...
That's correct. So this was kind of positioned out there so that you could float or paddle into South Haven, and that there could be a shuttle or a livery service that could take you back and forth, utilizing that river more than a has-been.
Yeah, sounds great.
Anybody else? So, go ahead, Joe.
I support Charah and I support this project. It just seems like the good time to bring this up again. The last time we met outside, we had City Council in the park, and a resident brought up a good point that I think is worth bringing up again. He said, "When we raise it from $2 per capita for," his comment was, "Do we have the money?" And then I think George chimed in and asked you, Kate, "Do we have the money?" I would like to make a suggestion that we get Mr. Tuttle and a couple other people, and I would be glad to do it, because I did it for my own company, and create a one-pager that everyone in City Council can look at and see where we're at financially in terms of income, not in terms of property, not in terms of a balance sheet, just money in, money out versus the plan. And have a one-pager that everyone can look at and have it updated every quarter. It'd be a simple report. And that is in no way implying that our reports aren't good. That's in no way implying that we have a problem. I'm just simply saying, I think we I'm just simply saying, I think it would be a tool that would be beneficial up here. So on this issue of the $100,000 lending, it, we could look at a piece of paper and say, yep, we've got the money, no question. It would just make us better equipped to make decisions.
I'm happy to set up the time to meet with the finance director and show you that while business accounting is not the same as government accounting, our income comes in mostly with the taxes that you're going to see in, and that while we, we have a good idea about what's going out, we don't have to account for everything until the very end. I know that's very shocking to many people. I mean, we do track our expenses, but it's not a portion, and that's why when you do see your quarterly, your quarterly statement, those are unaudited numbers, meaning you can't hold, I mean, they're a good guide, but they're not set in stone. So I, I'm happy to sit down and see what, what we can better do to, to show you what you need to see.
Okay, and I can learn what I don't know.
I learn a lot from those ladies.
Okay.
I, I'm supportive of this. I just will, I know, I've said it once, I've said it a thousand times, I, I'm in favor of building more fields as long as we have a plan to maintain what we've currently invested in, period, end of story. So we have just dumped a lot of money into our fields in town here, and I know we need to make sure we've got a maintenance plan for what we've already built. So, on that note, we've got a motion, we've got a second. If there's no other questions or comments, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. It is approved. Next, City Council is going to be asked to consider the approval of an extension of the police services agreement with South Haven Charter Township.
I make a motion to approve the extension of the police services agreement with South Haven Charter Township.
Second.
Got a motion, we've got a second. Kate, you're here, Ross is waiting patiently, make sure all goes well.
That's right. Township Supervisor, Mr. Stein is here. So what is being asked of the council is to extend the police services agreement with South Haven Charter Township for another five-year term. We began this arrangement in December of 2019, and we have gone through our five years. It has worked out, I think, exceptionally well. I think that, not hearing any kind of concerns from, coming from the township side, and I believe that this has worked out to the betterment of both of our communities. Here, we are looking to continue those terms and look for another five-year term as well as a 5% increase to the contract value for each term. That's what's been provided here, and that has been reviewed by Mr. Stein, has been reviewed by, or is being put to you all for approval.
Any questions or comments from the group? Pretty straight up.
I just, obviously, this is okay with our police department, the workload and resources and all of that.
Yes.
Okay.
It just allows some economy of, as all these, many of these agreements, we see that benefit of having some scale, so that allows us to have more people to flex in and out, which is good. I think Ross is happy with our services, the township residents, and it's going well. So I will vote in favor. So we've got a motion, we've got a second to approve the extension of the police services agreement with South Haven Charter Township. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. It is approved. Next, we are going to, City Council, we ask to receive an update on the short-term rental enforcement program. Kelly is rushing to the stage.
Kelly is rushing on up here, and before she gets started, thank you very much for receiving this report, and O'Kelly will get into some of the details. We intentionally tried to keep this as more of a, kind of a bird's eye view, general overview, and wanted to show you our progress from 2022 to 2023.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening. How are you all? I apologize for the state of my voice. There is much more available today than there was last week.
Did you have a good kids' sports event or something good?
Well, yes, a good kids' sports event, and also some kids passing around some germs. So they're always good for that. So, so thank you for allowing me to be here with you tonight. A couple of weeks ago, Griffin Graham was here and provided you all with a property maintenance, maintenance and nuisance activity code enforcement update, and that update did not include any short-term rental data. So this evening, we do want to provide you, as Kate said, with some information that is specific to the short-term rental program. Again, it's a high-level overview of code enforcement activity in the STR program, and if after hearing the update tonight, there's any area where you all feel like you need additional information, go ahead and let Kate know, and we'll be sure to get you whatever detail you need in the coming weeks. So, excuse me. The short-term rental program has traditionally been staffed with only one employee, but I'm happy to report that we are now staffed by two hard-working employees, one full-time and one part-time, and they're responsible for administering the program and handling code enforcement. As with traditional code enforcement, goals of STR enforcement are education regarding applicable codes and regulations and compliance with requirements of the program, and enforcement actions are taken in an attempt to solve problems and eliminate violations, not to punish property owners. So STR enforcement actions typically begin with a warning and then proceed to municipal civil infractions, which are also known as tickets, and the report in your packet refers to first, second, and third violations, and the difference there is just the dollar amount associated with the ticket. In the STR ordinance, dollar amounts owed vary according to the type of infraction and the level of infraction. So, for example, the fine for renting an unregistered dwelling unit starts at $750, and then that fine increases each time to $1,000 after that for each subsequent violation. Also, by the time we reach a third violation, depending on the circumstances, this is really about the time we're ready to refer matters to court. It doesn't happen often, but occasionally, property, property owners are not responsive to our efforts to reach out and reach them to ensure compliance, and so we involve the municipal attorney and turn matters over. We did have two of those cases this year, both related to unregistered rentals. These both resulted in consent judgment, consent judgments, and both of these properties are now in compliance with the ordinance. Since January, STR enforcement staff has issued 195 short-term rental enforcement actions, and you can see that this exceeds last year's total, and we are not all the way through the year yet. So we have been able to increase enforcement action, and having that second staff member has really gone a long way to help with that. 151 of those were warnings, 32 were municipal civil infractions, and 12 ended up being complaint unfounded or dismissed. We issued 107 enforcements to business rental properties, 73 to personal rentals, and 15 to unregistered dwellings. And I want to clarify a note there that other properties in that table of the report may have been unregistered at the time the citation was, or the warning was issued, but the 15 noted in your report are still unregistered, and they're being monitored for, for additional rental activity and to try to bring those properties into compliance or to, you know, take additional enforcement action if we do find that they're continuing to rent. The other properties that were cited have since been registered and are in compliance. If you look at the breakdown of the types of violations, the most common this year were not having the rental certificate posted in the window and renting an unregistered dwelling. We're showing two categories in your report for renting while unregistered. These are two categories that really can be combined. The renting while expired category was used early on, but kind of inconsistently, and so now staff are using the STR unregistered category for both. So those two rows of that table can really be combined. And one last bit of STR news, I just want to make you all aware, we've talked a little bit about additional STR software modules that we've purchased, and we do have the 24/7 hotline, complaint hotline that will be ready to launch on December 1st. There will be an online form and a telephone number that members of the public can use to report non-emergency issues and concerns regarding short-term rental properties. People should always continue to use 911 for an emergency. The rental hotline is only for non-emergency issues. The hotline will be available 24 hours a day. If you call, you will be able to talk to a real person that is staffed by our software provider. We will be sending out a letter to rental property owners, managers, and agents so that everyone will be aware of the December 1st date. We anticipate there could be some bugs as with any other new program, but we're hoping that this will be a helpful outlet for members of the public to let us know what their concerns are and helpful for staff as well to, to start keeping a better track of that data.
You mentioned to realtors and the investors, how will it be communicated to the public? Will it be on our regular website?
Yes, it will be linked to the website. We anticipate a press release going out. We have several ways that we plan to communicate, a flyer, a little business card size printout that we'll be passing out. So we have a couple of different things planned to let people know that that tool is available starting December 1st.
Can I ask you one other question about occupancy?
Yeah.
Over occupancy is, is a hot issue with a lot of residents.
Sure.
And it's also an issue, I think, that's one of the hardest to try to prove.
It is.
You can see 10 cars outside someone's home, but we don't know if they're actually sleeping there or they leave in the middle of the night. How did we have this many violations? How did we even know that there was an occupancy issue?
So the occupancy issue is one of the hardest to get, and, you know, there is one down the street from me, a rental property that is down the street from me, and I guess, fortunately for the program, probably unfortunately for the property owner, they rented to a very large group that was very loud throughout the weekend, and they were very loud during the night, and all of the same cars that were there in the night were still there in the morning. And so I knew from my own experience that that property had over rented, and code enforcement, STR code enforcement officers can make similar assessments. We don't have 24-hour staff that's all in town, and so that is a drawback of that type of enforcement, but it is a possibility if people, and we, we think that the hotline is one way that property owners can start to gather some of that data on their own and report through the hotline. They'll be able to give us images of their own. So if you see your neighbor's property has too many cars, and those same cars are there in the morning, and that same group of people, and you just, you suspect that they're over rented, that type of data can be loaded into that online hotline form, and then staff can use that to follow up on that complaint. So that's one area that's going to help us quite a bit. The other area where we're able to pursue enforcement is if someone leaves a review, and we see through the review on an Airbnb website or VRBO that, you know, oh, my group of 25 stayed at, you know, such and such a place down the street, then we know that we need to follow up because they over rented.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, well, Kelly, I just want to say to you, as Joe mentioned, occupancy is a hot topic, but short-term rentals in, in general are a hot topic. So thank you for you being calm, cool, and collected. We get lots of emails, and people are passionate about the topic, and sometimes the emails aren't very friendly, and, and, you know, can be a little mean, and so thank you for always doing a good job and being professional and handling it very well. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll echo that. I guess, and we always like to ask too, as a council, I mean, are there things that you'd like to share with us that we should have our eyes on? I mean, I, we, we take feedback too. There's other things that we should have our eyes on, things that, concerns you've got in your position? I mean...
Well, I'll give that some thought, and I'll get back to you.
There you go. So do that. Tell me a little about STR and register, those numbers, 52 versus 73, 2023 versus 2022. Just, can you help us understand? I know what it, I mean, just to kind of maybe to share...
Are you looking at the comparison?
Yeah, the STR enforcement, that, just your little bar graph that showed STR is unregistered.
71, page 71?
Yeah. I was just kind of...
Let me pull that up so I can see specifically what you're asking.
Is it 72? 72, the little bar graph.
It's entitled STR Enforcement 2022 Versus 2023.
Okay. Okay. So are you looking at how in 2022 there were 73 STR unregistered, but in 20, in 2022 we showed 73, and in 2023 we're showing 52?
Yeah. Just, I mean, what does that look like? Just from your guys' perspective, is that, you know...
Yeah, and that's where I mentioned, those two rows, the STR unregistered and the STR renting while expired should be combined.
Combined.
They're really kind of the same thing.
Because it looks the same, because it's maybe more, more expired than the other. That's what...
Yeah. The other thing I can tell you is that staff is really working hard to send notices earlier as they're seeing property expirations coming up. So getting those 90, 60, 30-day notices out to property owners to let them know that their expirations are coming and they need to get renewed, and so we're getting better response that way, and we're starting to see less need for those types of enforcements because people are responding.
Getting better, right. Long-term, isn't that the goal of the software too? Isn't that gonna really...
Yes. And the software will help automate a lot of that.
Dial that up. Perfect. That's good. Well, very good. I'll just say, well done.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Can I just ask about, in that same bar graph, the certificate not being posted because that's such a significant difference from 2022 to 2023, 75 versus 6?
Yeah.
Is that a case of this being more common now, or is it just something that the enforcement officer is looking for more now?
Yes, that was really a capacity item where, where with only one staff member, we just didn't have an opportunity to go look for some of those things, and now that we have additional staff, we actually have someone that can go out on the street and, and walk and, you know, drive and look for those types of things.
You know if there's a common reason for it not being posted?
Not that we're hearing, no. And sometimes I, we do, we have also had time to follow up on certificates that are just left in the office and not picked up at all, and I think sometimes that was just genuine, oops, I forgot to pick up my certificate. You know, property owners aren't in town, they live out of town, and they just didn't remember to get here and pick up their certificate from the front desk and get it posted.
Got you. Joe?
Can you give me some idea on the two that went to court? What did it cost for the court case? How much did the city have to pay, if anything? If the person's found guilty, do they have to pay for the court costs? How does that work?
Yeah, every, I don't have those details for you tonight, but I'm sure that those are things we would be able to look into and provide to you. You know, every decision is a little bit different. I do know that the judge that hears these cases is also, he is very fair to the city, but also very fair to the property owner. And so he, he considers both perspectives probably very evenly in making the decision. So while our enforcement, our enforcement decisions have been held up, I, I couldn't tell you off the top of my head what additional fees have been, may or may not have been recouped through those actions. I would have to find out for you.
Because I think it's important that residents know that this, A, the city is enforcing the rules.
Yes.
And B, if we do try to enforce it and we take it to court, are we winning? And then C, who's paying for this? The court cases? And does it come out of the fees that the short-term rental people are paying, the 600 or in case of personal, 100? I mean, that's valid, good questions that I think residents should know the answer to.
Those are good questions. Yeah. Thank you.
Kelly, I don't know if this would be something that, as far as going back to the costs for enforcement, I know in our annual STR report, usually is a, there's a summary of costs associated with the program, and I would expect that any kind of legal cost would also get factored in there.
It would be.
Okay.
All right, anything else? If not, thank you for the update.
Thank you.
And have a great day. Hope to get your voice back.
Thanks.
All right, next, oh, we're looking for, City Council is going to be asked to provide direction on the next steps regarding the regulation of permanent fire pits, fireplaces, and barbecues. So we got a couple options here, and...
We do. We do. And Kelly is here to kind of walk us through what's going on. As you heard, this has been, and George can say, he's been on the, the subcommittee on this. So the planning commission has referred to you, some options here, and trying to get some direction on what you'd like to see. And Kelly is here to kind of, kind of give us the Cliff Notes version as to what we're looking for between option B or option A, and what the subcommittee worked on, what they're asking you for. and what the subcommittee worked on, what they're asking you for, for some direction on.
You're stuck with the voice a little bit longer.
Got it.
I don't know how much you all remember about the history of the fire pits and how they ended up at the planning commission. So I just want to give you a brief reminder, if that's okay. So these, this fire pit topic has has been a regular on the planning commission uh for the past year or better. So prior to twenty-twenty-one, permanent fire pits, fireplaces, barbecue structures were not regulated in the city of South Haven. And in September of twenty-twenty-one, the city council did pass a zoning text amendment that imposes some regulations for these structures. Specifically, there was a twenty-five-foot setback from any structure, principal, or accessory, as well as a ten-foot setback from any property line in order to install a permanent grill, fireplace, or fire pit. Not portable units, we're only talking about the permanent ones. So the following spring, as property owners and contractors started preparing for their projects, they realized that the restrict, that the regulations were overly restrictive. And you all started hearing from members of the public. And they were voicing concerns that they could not build their projects as planned. And you all then requested that the planning commission take another look at the regulations. The planning commission created a subcommittee. And it was not until August of this year that the subcommittee's recommendations were presented to the planning commission. So the subcommittee's recommendations would not change any of the definitions that are currently in the zoning ordinance for permanent outdoor fire pit, fireplace, or barbecue. But they would remove the setbacks from the structures. So we would no longer have that twenty-five-foot setback from a home or a garage. Instead, they would establish a setback from property lines only based on the unit type and fuel source. The setbacks are more restrictive for wood burning units than for gas or propane. Gas, fireplaces, and fire pits would have a fifteen-foot setback. And wood burning units would have a twenty-five-foot setback. And grills and barbecues would have a ten-foot setback. And the thinking on this was that, for the most part, grills are not used for as long as a fire pit or a fireplace might be. And this is all shown in the summary table on page seventy-nine of your packet. This is the option A text. So during a discussion of the subcommittee recommendations, the planning commission also discussed the elimination of wood burning units. And councilman sleeper, feel free to jump in at any time. This was because um members of the public were still continuing to raise concerns about smoke uh from wood burning fire pits and fireplaces. And so the planning commission asked staff to prepare a secondary text option. This is your option B, that would eliminate wood burning fire pits and fireplaces altogether. Again, just the permanent structures, we're only regulating permanent structures. So at the October fifth meeting, the planning commission reviewed both the A and B text options, but ultimately recommended that you all should consider the text as well as whether or not the code of ordinances should be changed to restrict wood burning during specific times of year. The planning commission needs your recommended text option in order to hold a required public hearing, at which point they will need to send the text back to you in order to make any ordinance amendments official. So we're still a ways off here and the planning commission really needs your direction. So the primary difference between the two texts is that the B text prohibits wood burning units altogether. The A text permits them, but with a greater setback.
So if I could just chime in real quick. So the the planning commission didn't want to do something that eventually was not something the city council wanted. So that's kind of why we're, we're, the planning commission is sending two options our way. One is is including the wood burning. The option B is without wood burning. Because that seems to be the main uh, the main thing that kind of brings up the most. That was the thing that brought up the most discussion, both in our subcommittee and in the planning commission. So we we were concerned that if we we picked the wrong one and sent it to to city council, that it would be coming back anyway. So we thought, well, we'll, we'll, we'll send city council two options and and they can tell us, the planning commission, which option they want. I personally am am in favor of option A. I think that it strikes the proper balance. That's the one that came out of the the subcommittee. But I'm willing to, you know, support either option to get this through, so.
And what I've been hearing from homeowners is, um, you know, A or B, just do something. They want to proceed. And then from landscapers, I've been hearing the same thing. They're like, just tell us what the rule's gonna be so we can get, we got jobs on hold. So, yeah, we certainly think we should uh make a decision. And with that in mind, I'd I'd make a motion to instruct the planning commission to proceed with option A.
I'll second that.
All right, we've got a motion, we've got a second. I am, I would also be in favor of A. I think we need to continue to have the option. I like the setback change. I think that strikes that balance, as George mentioned, so.
Um, I just had a couple of questions. If the setbacks from a safety standpoint, those are good, like fire safety wise?
Yes.
Yeah, that's very good.
And then um, like, do we know, how common are permanent wood burning structures anyway? Yeah. I can't imagine those would be very common.
Conversations I've had with.
We've got little of in our neighborhood.
They've just pizza ovens, wood burning pizza ovens. Where the only permanent wood thing that I had heard of.
I, I think most of the concern is about fire pits and fireplaces. And most of what we're hearing that the public wants to build is gas fire pits and also permanent grills. And so those are the things that we are hearing most about as staff. I don't have a number, um, I have not been able to permit, issue any permits under the current regulations.
Need to get this done. Per the request. Yeah.
The other thing I'll mention, and Kelly, Kelly talked about this, is that the the planning commission is kind of responsible for the zoning ordinance. Now, if we in city council wanted to uh be more restrictive on burning wood in, say, temporary fire pits, that would be something that would go in the code of ordinances. And it's not really in the purview of the planning commission. So that's something that we as a, as a city council can discuss if we want to go that next step. But that's why we're only talking about permanent uh fire pits and and permanent structures, because those are the structures that are covered in the zoning ordinance.
That makes sense.
Yeah, good point.
Yeah, all right. Just a question, I don't know the answer to this at all. It seems like to me, over the years, many communities have been concerned about air pollution and breathing. And years ago, we stopped burning leaves for that reason. And I think some communities don't want wood burning anymore for the same reason. So have we even looked at the difference between gas, what it puts into the air, if anything, and wood burning, and what does that do to our air? Because some residents have said to me, I can be two doors down, two houses down, and someone's burning wood. And those fumes and even a little bit of debris, I think, comes right into the yard and into their home. And even in the summer, when people burn outside in a fire pit with wood, they're finding themselves closing windows and turning air conditioning on when it's not even that hot out. So have we looked at that, at planning, looked at that, the the pollution issue with wood? Or is that not something?
I guess I would say that yes, to a certain extent. Now, if you look at the ordinance, there are restrictions on the type of wood that is supposed to be burned. And so that would, in theory, reduce the amount of smoke. Because you're you're burning quality wood. You're not burning stuff that's not.
Yeah, like.
Generates a lot of smoke.
Or pressure-treated wood, you wouldn't do that.
Even in the current ordinance, no one should be burning leaves or trash in the city limits or construction materials. It should just be seasoned wood.
And and that is the reason for the twenty-five-foot setback, is to try to provide that additional distance. That if you are burning wood, it's gonna not affect adjacent property owners. Now, depending on the wind, depending on other factors, yeah, you could still have some impact. But this is supposed to be, you know, a compromise.
All right, I think we've heard from everybody. So I'm voting in favor, so let's go ahead. We've got a motion, we've got a second to approve option A and get this A moment forward. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, no. It is approved, very good. On we go. Uh, next, uh, city council is gonna be asked to set a special meeting to occur on December the fourth, twenty-twenty-three, at five P M. to interview selected firms to provide legal, or sorry, general legal services.
Make a motion to approve a meeting to occur December fourth, twenty-twenty-three, at five P M. To interview selected firms to provide general legal services.
Second.
All right, motion second. Okay.
Well, thank you, mayor. Uh, this is following up to our RFP that was issued in early October, um, requesting proposals for general legal services. This will be a professional services contract. We don't necessarily have to go out for competitive bids, but knowing that this is a change we haven't made for some time, wouldn't be a bad idea to see what else is out there. So we have received eight timely submissions and I've reviewed them and kind of compared some costs, as well as some other items, and come up with a recommendation to interview four of the firms that have been, that have submitted. I'm proposing the December four date, um, to start at five o'clock. I know it'll be a little bit early, we'll provide, we'll provide dinner. But we're interviewing four of those firms. Um, and it would be a a public meeting, so people could come in, uh, you know, make their comments at the beginning of the meeting and then we can get going. Um, I would set up maybe some particular times so someone could come in and that that would be their block. But without knowing how much public comment we'll receive, I don't want to maybe assign them to be here at a certain time um and things take a little bit longer. But uh, it would be um council interviewing uh these potential firms and trying to figure out what is the best fit for the city.
Very good. Any questions?
Do you anticipate the format, like, would they be allowed a few minutes to present themselves and then we ask questions and something?
Relatively informal, just some guide points, I'm sorry, guide points as to, you know, kind of introduce us and then maybe some follow-up questions, kind of hitting on some concerns by council or just some some ideas that I've heard, I've had with uh seeing how other cities have done it.
Did you say, will they all be present during the entire interview process?
It's likely they would be sitting outside while each one is coming through.
Okay. Thanks.
All right, motion second to set, sorry, set that special meeting to occur December the fourth, at twenty-twenty-three, to interview uh selected firms providing general legal services. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, it is set. And next, we're gonna receive an update from Ms. Natalie Thompson, our police chief. Good evening, chief. Are we ready for a quiet Thanksgiving week?
Thank you. Wanted to start tonight with statistics. And these are, again, uh, year-to-date through October thirty-first of this year. So our top five criminal offenses are driving violations, obstructing justice, assault, larcenies, and retail frauds. Uh, per-person crimes, our top five are assault, sexual assault, sex offense, non-forcible, and we've had one kidnapping. Um, the next uh chart is just a breakdown of our property crimes. And you can see, um, we've had an uptick this time of year in our our retail frauds. Um, and our larcenies are are going up. It's pretty common for this time of year. And uh, with with our retail frauds, um, those are getting um larger. Many of them are involving bigger groups of people. So um, you know, we get dispatched to a retail fraud, it it is usually turning into a pretty complicated case. So um, that's unfortunate. We saw a rise in that during COVID and that is still going up. So it's unfortunate. Um, down below that, um, you can see our arrests for the year so far. We're up to five hundred and forty-five, um, which has surpassed all the previous years back to twenty nineteen. So um, the officers are doing a good job. Some of that's proactive. And again, some of that is um as a result of some of the more substantial complaints they're getting dispatched to. Foot patrol hours down a little bit, but I think there's always a direct correlation with, when they're doing other things, that may be down a little bit. Um, citations and warnings were up to two thousand and sixty-eight, which is surpassed all years since twenty nineteen. So again, enforcement, arrests, the officers are doing an excellent job. Uh, property checks, um, so far for the year, we're up to a thousand and five. Um, just this past couple of weeks, we've received um quite a few, so I expect that to go up. Um, our total calls for service for the year as of October thirty-first, um, total, uh, three thousand, six hundred and ninety-four. Um, in the township, um, one thousand, one hundred and twenty-seven. And in the city, two thousand, five hundred and sixty-seven. Uh, complaints, these are incidents that the officers take a report number on. Um, we are up to one thousand, eight hundred and eighty. And our last pie chart, so this is, uh, again, total for the year yielded for twenty-twenty-three. Um, we've had um a total of fifty-five non-domestic assaults and then sixty-two domestic assaults. So you can see that we're averaging uh more domestic-type assaults than non-domestic. Um, overnight parking enforcement, I guess that began on November fifteenth. So uh, the officers are, they're enforcing that regardless of weather conditions. I think consistency is better. That's how we've always done it in the past and it gets people into the habit. Um, in years where we've only done it with snow, then it it just creates confusion. So um, whether it snows or not, um, is, as complaint load allows, the officers will be enforcing that every night, um, between November fifteenth and March fifteenth. And again, the the big purpose for that is when it does snow, for snow removal. So that is two thirty A M. to six A M. And that prohibits parking on any city street. And anyone, uh, anyone, you know, complains or wants directions on how to contest one of these citations, the directions on how to do that are right on the back of the ticket. So it's pretty self-explanatory for that. And golf cart season um officially ended on November fifteenth. And so there, there are still vehicles being driven. Um, you may see um low-speed vehicles, for example. Uh, those are not golf carts, golf carts are not low-speed vehicles. Um, low-speed vehicles are defined under Michigan Motor Vehicle Code. I included that in my update. It's MCL two fifty-seven point twenty-five B. Um, low-speed vehicles have no seasonal or hourly restrictions and those are completely governed by the state, so. Um, information center update. And we, I think Matt Day or the city will be doing an official press release next week. Um, but we're gonna be closing our front lobby for a few days, um, beginning on December fourth. Uh, we're getting a new front lobby window installed at our front counter. Um, so in the meantime, like I said, we'll do press release, we'll have adequate signage. Um, so anyone needing services during that time period will need to call the information center um or call the MBER County Dispatch for assistance. Um, it's probably only gonna take three days. Um, but we're getting a new um front window in that is um more accessible um to all our employees and individuals coming into the lobby. So we'll be happy to get that project done. So it'll be a few days of inconvenience, but it should be a great improvement. And that is all I have for tonight. Does anyone have questions?
Uh, Chief Thompson, thank you for everything that you and your staff do. On the overnight enforcement, uh, I understand if there's a property that doesn't have off-street parking, is it possible to get like a, uh, I don't know, a. parking, is it possible to get like a, I don't know, a placard or something they can put in their vehicle to show that they had permission to park overnight on the street? I know you don't like to, obviously like to do that, but--
Well, no, and I'll probably defer to the city manager. She and I are aware of, there are actually a couple of properties in the city that literally have no driveway. So, I'll probably defer to Kate, but it's preferable that it gets run by the city manager and we're in concert on the address. But to answer your question, yes, we are more than happy to do that. I've found out over the years, so I, we have to be very specific and put the address on a date because one year someone made copies of those and like, 25 cars, it's like, hmm, that was smart. So, in answering to your question, yes, there are some residences that legitimately need those. So, Kate and I had discussed that and yes.
Yep, there's a handful of homes in town that just don't have driveways. There's no place to park. We're aware of them. So, we've worked with the homeowners as well as, or if it's a tenant situation and have provided passes.
Okay. Last question, how's your staffing? Are you guys doing pretty good? Got everyone through training and--
Well, I've got very good news. I was going to share my comments, but we have made a job offer and it has been accepted. So, we are filling the vacancy that we've seen since September. So, we are issuing, we'll have a new officer starting next week. Phil Garcia will be joining the police force here.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. We're very fortunate, by the way, too, so.
Yeah, we are very fortunate.
Chief Thompson, I had one. When it comes to forging parking passes, I'm not saying that I ever did that at Western, but--
If he was going to.
I went to Western, too.
My comment was, you mentioned golf carts are done. And then, just to kind of clarify for some people, and you mentioned low-speed vehicles, but some low-speed vehicles do look like golf carts. And the giveaway is they will have a full regular license plate on them. And so, if you see it, it's a low-speed vehicle and they have different rules.
That is really the key. And I'll be the first to admit, you know, plus I don't work patrol every day. It is confusing. It's confusing for me. So, I would say just a very good indicator would be the state of Michigan license plate because that is, that is basically, okay, the state of Michigan to issue this vehicle that plate to be driven everywhere, it's kind of passed all the checklist of, you know, more equipment than just a golf cart. So, you know, of course, people can steal license plates and stuff, but generally speaking, I would say that the Michigan license plate would be a good indicator that, hey, it's passed the rules for Secretary of State to be that kind of vehicle. But I agree with you, a lot of these different side-by-side, it can be very confusing, so. I agree.
Yes. All right, very good. Thank you to you, to your staff. Happy Thanksgiving to all of them, so thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, we are now at public comment. So, citizens of the audience, we heard on items that are not on the agenda, says you'd like to come on up, state your name and address. You'll have up to five minutes and we'd love to hear what you have to say. Even if it's what time's dinner, Thursday. Good evening.
Annie Brown, 114 Michigan Avenue. And I just want to comment on Mr. Reeser's comments about Mr. Tuttle's comments about the finances. And I don't want those to be misleading to our public because the city's annual audit is always posted on the state of Michigan website. So, the city has complete transparency regarding the finance reports and what we have in the budget. So, and I want to thank our finance staff for their hard work and their diligence on that. Thank you.
Make sure comments. Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Anybody else? Going once, going twice, all right. City manager comments. Kate?
From my microphone. Well, thank you very much. I did want to just kind of briefly talk about the leaf collection. It is ongoing. We are working 10-hour days, Monday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and then we're doing eight hours on Saturday. So, if you've not seen a leaf truck, plus, trust me, they're coming through. I know I got a lot more leaves put out to my yard this weekend after the Michigan game. And, so I know a lot of people have getting them out. So, we did have a truck that was breaking down last week and we got that fixed, but we are running two trucks all those hours and we will continue to run them as we have leaves to pick up. And we typically will pick up in the rain, but we won't pick up in the snow. It really does gum up the machines, so we will continue to run them until the snow flies. I did get asked recently, are we going to be focusing any of our efforts at Lakeview Cemetery? We will get in there, but my focus for our staff right now is to get the ones off the streets picked up. So, that's what we're going to be doing. If you, if there are concerns that your street has not been picked, picked up, please call 637-0737 and let the staff know. I know we've been doing some routes, so there's that. I did also want to talk about the ice rink. Typically, we do open on the Friday right after Thanksgiving. However, we had some really nice sunny days and some warm seasonal weather. Our chiller cannot keep up with that. We do have a brand-new chiller coming, but it'll be here after Christmas. They had around a 53, 54-week lead time, so it will be here. It just won't be here right away. So, to that, we have to wait for some colder weather. We also have, the ice rink office had a bit of a hole in the ceiling, so we've got to get that fixed. The landlord is getting that fixed, but until it stops leaking, we can't really get some folks in there. We also have a management change coming with the ice rink contract. So, with that, we've got a number of things that are in the works. I hope to have an update here for the public because I know how much everyone enjoys the ice rink, but until we get those things sorted out, I don't have a date for us to open. So, with that being said, the last thing I wanted to say is that, kind of stole my thunder a little bit ago, is that we have made an offer and we will be having a new officer, Phil Garcia, joining the force and his first day will be Monday. I'm very excited to see that. I know that we've had our police officer job posting up for some time and it's nice to get that finally filled. We do know that we have some more retirements coming up next year and we hope to, again, do a very aggressive recruiting scheme, but it was very nice to get that finally filled. Those are my comments. Happy Thanksgiving.
Very good. Any questions?
Leaves, back to leaves, we're saying. If we get an early snow, it's pretty common for us to send the leaf truck out again in the spring to clean up.
That's correct. If we get an early snow and then we have several weeks where it's just dried out and we still have the leaves out there, we can go out there and get them picked up. We just can't have the snow. It really gums up those machines. So, if we do have an early snow, something like we had in Halloween, if, as long as it dries out and then we're not having like those, you know, kind of ice blocks getting sucked up, we can go back out there.
Yeah, like last year it snowed a lot in November. They were back in December and I can tell them in January. I mean, I think, you know, pickle those machines around.
Correct.
Very good. Any other questions for Kate? No? Thank you much, appreciate it. Council comments, I'll start on my left.
Okay.
Students and how's the teachers?
Well, it was a pretty exciting day today at the high school because they announced the musical is going to be Mary Poppins. And so, that was a big buzz around the school. But my comments, just thanks to everyone that voted for me. I appreciate your faith in me. If you didn't vote for me, I still hope to represent you as best I can. And I wanted to wish everyone have a good, happy Thanksgiving. Lots of time with family.
Very good. Thank you, sir.
I just wanted to say, I unfortunately, or kind of fortunately, because I will be somewhere warm, won't be here at our next meeting. So, sorry I'm going to miss it. Sounds like we've got some good stuff coming up. And that's it for me.
I just wanted to congratulate everyone that ran and got elected for office. And I also wanted to thank everyone that made the sacrifice to put their name in the hat to run for office because I know that's a big sacrifice to do that. And it's nice that we in the city had multiple good choices to choose from for those seats. So, that's it.
Very good. My only comments are I hope everyone has a safe and happy Thanksgiving. And as far as the election, I think everyone really tried to represent the issues and tried to represent the residents. And I hope going forward, when we start January 1st, the new people that'll be on City Council, our new mayor, that the city comes together and supports them, gives them every opportunity to succeed because bottom line, we all want the city to do well and the residents to be happy and be taken care of in this town. Thanks.
Very good, thank you. Just again, how nice was it to have Jim McClew and Bob Copine here tonight? Just two remarkable people. Hopefully, everyone's got family coming home. My college students are en route, so I should have three home within two days, so I'm excited. So, happy Thanksgiving to everybody. And again, yeah, congratulations to, you know, everybody that ran, the one that didn't win for participating. Thanks to Megan and everybody that helped make the election possible. Thank you. I know you had a super long day and hopefully you got a few nap days afterward because if not, you should. So, on that note, again, happy Thanksgiving and we're not going to adjourn. We're actually, this will end the regular meeting. Almost on us home. I thought about it, but we need to have a quick review. City Council is going to be asked to consider a motion to go into closed session pursuant to MCL 15.2681A for an annual personal evaluation for our city manager.
I make a motion to go into closed session.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. This is a roll call.
Onuki.
Yes.
Reeser.
Yes.
Sleeper.
Yes.
Arnold.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes. So, we will take a five-minute recess, return here, and after that, we will adjourn after--
From here.
From here. So, very good. Thanks, everybody, again, happy Thanksgiving.[1784.91]